Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, welcome everybody, good evening. We're going to get started here. We've got an agenda I need to get approval for. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll second.
Thank you. All little favors, sign the five of saying aye. Those posts, same signs. We've got some close session minutes from September 26, 2017. Need a motion to approve them as presented.
It's a move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Jen, please.
Brewer.
Yes.
Duree Raj.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Siren.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Jurevich.
Yes.
Cuff.
Yes. Moving on, communications. You guys are on the agenda, you know that? I don't know, let's see, we've got 3A IESA girls and boys cross-country teams. GMS has been busy, Mrs. Rutt.
They have been very busy. Today has been a busy day. I was able to take eight students to the leadership conference in Rochester and then I am so proud tonight to introduce more students. The director of athletics, Dusty Burke, is currently at a basketball game, girls' basketball game. It's pink-out night, so he apologizes that he could not be here, but I am speaking on his behalf. We are so very proud of the cross-country team as well as the boys' baseball team. At this time, I would like to introduce our cross-country coaches. Ms. Boston, would you step forward? And if you could introduce the other coaches that are here tonight and kind of share with us the great news about the cross-country season.
All right, we've got Coach Hartzell here. Coach Matarra and Coach Shingy couldn't be here, but we thank you very much. We had an outstanding season, both boys and girls, this third at state. We are very proud of all of our athletes and how well that they did and the sportsmanship that they displayed this season. So I just want to get Stuart to read these off to you there or are we just going to give them to him later?
You know what, let's read them off and those of you that are here tonight, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and kind of standing in front of the board because we'd like to take a picture.
Perfect. We've got Ella Dieler, Savannah Bell, Parker Doggett, she played basketball with us, Mia Gibson, Ava Gory, Ella Gory, Lydia Guernsey.
Ah.
All right. Carly Richardson, Ainsley Wilson, Mitchell Bergen. Juan Page. Val Sprow. John Smith.
I also wanted to mention, matter of fact, I'll send this to the board, I just recently received an email from a competing athletic director and a coach. He sent an email to me on behalf of our coaches and our team for the simple purpose of talking about the sportsmanship, what great students we have, the success of the program. So, it's really great. Trust me, I get a lot of different emails from time to time. So when I get those emails, I just wanted not only our student-athletes, but you as parents to know that it speaks volumes when I get those types of emails. And it speaks to the coaches as well because when you're going to other schools and facilities and events, you're representing the school community. And so, when you hear all these wonderful things, that's one thing from those who are around you. But when you have others that take their time that don't even know you to make those types of comments, I think it speaks volumes. So, congratulations for that as well.
Yeah, why don't you guys join in here so that I'll get a picture. All right, great job, we're proud of you guys.
And the wonderful thing is, overall, it's so great to see the students having fun. And I think this next group had a lot of fun while enjoying a lot of winning and wonderful scores. At this time, I'd like to introduce Coach Hummel.
Real quick, on behalf of the team, we'd like to present Mrs. Rutt and Dr. Wood and the board, state championship medal.
Is that work, guys?
So, yeah, this is a wonderful group of kids, good students, come from great families, parents were fantastic all season long, hardworking, I think they represent our community really well, went undefeated, 20-0. So, I'd like to introduce the team, all right? Eli Curtis. Post-baseball injury. Justin Ping. Sam Holvey. Jason Bergen. Nolan Masters. Addison Hickman. Logan Stokes.
Yeah, I'm going to have Coach hand this out, but Dave Kinsey, who's our village president, and I will paraphrase because this will take a little longer, but in recognizing the achievements of the Glenwood Middle School Boys State Baseball Champions, whereas the members of the corporate authorities of the Village of Chatham are pleased to congratulate the members of the 2017 Glenwood Middle School Baseball Team on the occasion of winning the Class A, IESA Class 3A State Championship and whereby the Glenwood Middle School Titans defeated Cold City 4-3 on September 30, 2017, in dramatic fashion to claim the state title. And whereas the title capped an undefeated 20-0 season for the Glenwood Middle School Titans, marking only the second undefeated season in 3A IESA history.
Wow.
Yes, that is something to be proud of. It goes on to mention each of their names and now therefore be it resolved by the president and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Chatham, Sangamon County, Illinois. We congratulate the members of the Glenwood Middle School Titan Baseball Team on the occasion of winning the Class 3A IESA State Championship and wish them many more years of continued success. And each player will receive one of these, so congratulations.
Thank you for coming out tonight and thank you for making us so very proud. Congratulations.
For the record, just next month, we're going to also recognize a tennis team from the high school that participated in the state championship series and I believe second.
Thanks, Coach.
Tennis was second, so we're going to do full recognition next month.
Wow, it's Mike. How are you going to top that?
Yeah, I can't follow that, guys, I'm sorry.
Well, we'll give you a shot.
I'll take a shot, that's just what I got.
So this is 2017-18 Facilities and Grounds Report. I want to point out that we have a new mission statement that we created in my department. Our mission is to provide a safe and clean, comfortable environment that is conducive to teaching and learning. Short and simple, that's kind of what we want to do. Some of our maintenance goals for this year, continue to execute maintenance requests prioritized by using basically school dues, our automated work order system, support facility operations through management of budgets, supplies, and equipment evaluation, support leadership-specific requests, if we get something that needs to be done right away by our principal or board member or staff or whatever, that's going to take care of that. Improve preventive maintenance of district equipment through staffing and efficiencies gains. Preventive maintenance in the district, as a lot of us know, is lacking considerably. And provide annual and periodic professional development for staff. This is the way we prioritize our work orders. Emergency repairs are obviously those things that are considered life-threatening or something that needs to be fixed right now, it's a safety issue. Our next priority is health, life, safety. We get a health, life, safety inspection in our schools every year. Actually, they're going on right now, we have ball on Thursday as a matter of fact. And these health, life, safety write-ups are identified by two different ways. We have a 10-year evaluation, which is conducted by district architect, by our architect. And the other one is done annually, and that's ROE, is Lyle Wind and the State Fire Marshal accompanies him. So, we basically have one inspection every year and one every 10 years per building. Routine maintenance are those jobs that we do on a daily basis, just a standard work order that comes through, ballast out, whatever, warm or cold in the classroom, whatever the case is, those are our routine maintenance work orders, we do those on a daily basis. The next category is project request, and these are items that the cost is going to exceed $500 or eight hours labor. And this comes from a request, usually a principal, a custodian, or somebody along those lines, that fill out a project request form, then it has to be approved by the principal and facilities and grounds. And then, it's a budgeted thing, so we get to it if we can do it. If we can't, then we just have to kind of put it on the back burner until we can get it done or find another avenue to get that work done. And then our final one, and not that it's less important than anything else, it's just lower on the totem pole as far as urgency goes, is preventive maintenance, and that's the typical maintenance that you do on air conditioning systems or cars or whatever the case is. Some of our challenges in the department, we have aging equipment, a lot of us know that already, and the complexity, the newer systems we have, a lot of the people that we have have not been, they've been trained on it, they had onsite training scenario when the equipment was installed, but there's no real official training for this equipment. So, you know, we kind of, we have one guy that can get through it and monitor the system and manage the system, but the rest of the guys really can't, including myself. I mean, I kind of muddled my way through it, but I'm not that good at it myself. Aging maintenance vehicles, this year we actually had to go out and purchase a used vehicle for our plumber. His was completely, it was not even street legal anymore, basically, so we went out and bought him a new vehicle. But that's something that we're always concerned with, these are maintenance vehicles. And aging grounds equipment, a couple of years ago, most of you remember, we purchased a couple of new mowers. We had five or six, I think we had five at the time, that were in horrible condition. We purchased two new ones, it's gotten us through this far, but we are going to have to investigate purchasing some more mowers. Snow removal equipment, what I'm talking about here is that some of the schools, the snow removal equipment that they have for the schools themselves is not really snow removal equipment, it's just the equipment that we have. Like one of them's like a two-wheel drive gator, I mean, if you have six or eight inches of snow, it's not going to move much. It's got a blade on it, but it's just not going to do a whole lot. It just doesn't have the power to push that kind of snow. And then we have some trailers that we haul stuff around the district, and we've done some work on, but they're in pretty bad shape. As far as personnel goes, again, the staff, the training, it's just not up to pace for what we have, and that's something that we need to work on. Ground staffing, our biggest challenge there is the fact that we have, we have a lot of 24-hour people and they come and go, and they might be here for two or three weeks and they decide they don't like it, so we have to find another 24-hour person. So, it's pretty difficult for the grounds guys to actually stay staffed all the time. Under the maintenance department, this is our organizational chart, and the red here, that's the part-time people that I was talking about. All those positions are 24-hour positions and it's a pretty high turnaround. So, as you can see, a huge portion of our staff is 24-hour people. The blue are our summer help, which is basically our paint crew. This year we only had three painters, last year we only had three painters, we still have a vacant position there. And all of the names in black are full-time employees. So we have three grounds people, these HVAC, electrician, facilities foreman, and a plumber. We have one administrative assistants, there's three grounds folks, and then myself. That's the only full-time people we have. What I wanted to show here now, in the beginning of the presentation, it showed that this covered June of July 2016 to June 2017. These work orders here are still open from last year, just because they're a lower priority, we haven't gotten to them yet. So, that number of work orders, GHS for example, 53 of them are from last year, not counting the ones that we have open this year. So, we continue to chip away at them, it's just a staffing thing and it's just manpower, you know, it's really what it is. The next slide, these are work orders that we closed, now these are real work orders, the blues are real work orders that we closed. We actually completed 560 work orders just at the high school alone last year. Now, keep in mind, some of that is, we get a work order, we have a function in the commons at the high school, we're going to have, you know, 1,000 people in there to do whatever, 500 people. So some of those requests are, we need to turn the air conditioning on for that amount of time. So a lot of those, I won't say a lot, but a certain percentage of those requests are things like that, you know? But what I really want to point out on this screen, the ones in red are closed PMs, and those PMs are closed, but they're not completed, meaning that PMs are regenerated about every four months. So we get 300 or 400 of them every four months. If we don't close them, those aren't done, the majority of those aren't done, but if we don't close them, we're going to have 800 on the books when the other 400 come on, see? So, the only thing I can do to regulate the number of work orders we have is to close them. And I have a spreadsheet in the office that I'm actually building right now to show the ones that were actually closed compared to the ones that were completed. Under the custodial department, this is their organizational chart, there's 35 custodians in the district right now, we're fully staffed, which is a good thing. Next slide. This slide shows, this organization, APA, is an organization that basically came up with some cleaning level standards for K through 12 education along with some colleges. I'm not going to read everything, but basically, level one is orderly, level two is ordinary. Next slide, please. Level three is casual. Next slide. Level four is moderate. So the next slide, there you go. So, on this slide, what we're showing is, so at GHS for example, we have 10 custodians at GHS. So the highlighted numbers are the number of custodians per site, which clean, so if you go across these numbers right here, it says, if you want a level two cleanliness, for example, you should have 20,000, each custodian should clean 20,597 square feet. Well, over here on the right, it shows what, at the high school, what they're actually cleaning, so they're at 29,3 something. So they fall right in here somewhere, so right around a 2 and 1/2. So, if you go down through here and do the math, you can see that the majority, like these three schools here, are about a 2 and 1/2. So that's the high school, the middle school, and GIS. BES and GES have five custodians as well, they have a little bit less square footage, so they should be at a cleanliness level of two. Now CES is a, has five custodians with 72,000 square feet, so they should have a cleanliness level of one. Which for the most part, these are pretty accurate, but district-wide, we run about a 2 and 1/2. So if we wanted a two district-wide, right now we have 35 custodians there, if we wanted to have a cleanliness level of say 20, or say a number two, we would have to hire about nine custodians, according to what these standards are. Next slide, please. Our next category is health, life, safety. These inspections are performed again by the district architect, the ROE and the State Fire Marshal. They are more in-depth because the State Fire Marshal is now included. Prior to me getting here, I guess last year, maybe the year before, was the first year that the State Fire Marshal was involved in it, so basically it's more eyes, you know, looking at our violations. And we're in good shape for the most part, but, so basically what this says is they're being found because there's more people looking at us. But the review process is, as we get those violations, and the ROE sends them to me via email, all the violations per school, and I create a school due, not me personally, but we create school dues in my department, and we track those particular work orders to make sure that we get those done. Because repeat violations is the worst thing you can have as far as health, life, safety goes. Next slide. Here's why I'm going to show that. Last year, or the year before last, 15-16, the first year I was here, that was our, those were our grades. In 16-17, you can see, we stayed the same except for CES, we went up a grade, and that's because we are working on repeat violations in that school, and actually in all the schools. Ball Elementary and Glenwood Elementary dropped a grade, and it's because of repeat violations. And typically, the repeat violations are things like this. They, and they'll write it up every time. So basically what they're saying is cable should be inside a channel, and Josh's department, my department, have been working very well together to start closing some of those things out, put those wires inside channels. So we are working on it. There's a lot of it in this district though, there's a whole lot of it. So, just until we get it done, we're going to get repeat violations. Department accomplishments, the security entrance at Chatham Elementary, we finished that. We're not completely closed out because there still are a couple of little change orders out there and the final pay, we don't have our final drawings and all that stuff yet, so that's kind of still hanging out there. But what we did over there, we relocated the main office, and we created a capture area similar to the other buildings. And if, most of us have gone over there to see it, and it came out really, really nice. Water sampling district-wide, percent of bill 550, 12 of our 267 devices, we had 267 devices tested. 12 of them came back above EPA guidelines of 15 parts per billion, if you guys remember those numbers. Since then, we've replaced all 12 devices, and we've re-sampled twice for them, and we've come, now, all of our devices are below EPA guidelines of 15 parts per billion. So, we're pretty proud of that, that's quite an accomplishment. In addition, we refinished and restripped the gym floor at Glenwood Intermediate to remain in compliance with IESA standards. And what was happening there was, when they would have volleyball games over there, the lines weren't painted white, so Dusty's guys would actually go over there and put tape on the floor in order to make us, make us in compliance, to keep us in compliance. So we just had them strip it all down, and then we came back and repainted the lines. It looks really, really good over there, if nobody's seen it. And in addition, we replaced the dock level at Glenwood High School. Our next steps, actually we're in the process of, we've ordered a contract to Henson Robinson to replace the air-cool boilers at the high school, that's in process right now. Actually, they've been ordered, and there's like a four or six-week leave time for the boilers. We plan on moving forward with the chiller replacement at the high school, that RFP is on the website right now, so that's publicized. I sent the emails out, sent invites out to five or six mechanical contractors, and hoping more of them will look at the paper and, you know, we'll take as many bids as we can get. Also move on with the heating and air conditioning to 100 and 200 wings at Chatham Elementary. Now this next one is investigate the possibility of a roofing consultant. I think that we can probably get this done by, I don't think there's going to be a cost to this, but I want to partner basically with a roofing vendor or roofing contractor, maybe not a contractor, but a consultant of some sort, to kind of guide us in what we need to do with our roofs, because our roofs are aging. The one at the high school just went out of warranty in 2014. So we have some aging roofs here, and we have some pretty bad roof conditions in this district. I'm not a roofing professional, so I would like to partner with some sort of roofing consultant, and so they can guide us and direct us on what we need to do with our roofing replacements. And then we continue to review service contracts with vendors for accuracy and validity. And this is much like the Armore contract that we looked over, Mr. Lovelace did an excellent job on that, and we found a lot of deficiencies, and we're going to just continue to do that. Yes, sir?
How do you feel about your staffing levels?
I don't have enough, is the bottom line. And I'm in the process of putting some numbers together to present and show that we don't have enough. My biggest problem is preventive maintenance. There's no two ways about it. It's just not getting done. You know, we have, there's, each piece of kitchen equipment, on average, takes three hours to do preventive maintenance on each piece of equipment. So if each kitchen has 12, 15 pieces of equipment, you know, we're talking 45, 50 hours, we're talking over a week just for preventive maintenance alone. This is just not happening. We just can't stay in a kitchen for, you know, a whole week at a time to do preventive maintenance, it's just not happening, we don't have the staffing with the time to do it. So, but I am in the process of putting some numbers together for that, to show that, I mean, I could definitely justify, just to, my, what I would like to do is just get a kitchen equipment technician, and just let him do the kitchen equipment, let my HVAC guy do his part, and then they do their own PMs, you know, and it's, kind of separate the two.
What do your 24-hour people do that you have?
Mow.
So can you farm that, is that something we could bid out and somebody could do? Would that be an easier solution?
As far as mowing goes?
Yeah. There's millions of contractors that do that near.
Yeah, I think that's something that could be looked at, yeah, I really hadn't thought about that, but, but they, I mean, they don't just mow, they, like on rainy days, they come inside, and matter of fact, we have a project that I just assigned them a couple of days ago, we're shredding a bunch of documents in the district, and we use those guys for all kinds of stuff. It's not just mowing. But when the weather's bad, I mean, they come inside and they're going to unload all my documents and stack them up, and then we're going to take them to shred. There's 65 huge boxes of documents that have to be taken somewhere to shred, and so, they do a lot of interior work. Matter of fact, at GIS, for example, we had a pretty bad rainstorm in the spring, and a lot of the cement tiles along the perimeter walls got soaked, fell out in some cases, so those grounds guys are going to be... So, those grounds guys are going to go in there and, and help them replace those ceiling tiles and cut ceiling tiles and all that stuff, just to, just to help out, because it's a huge, it's a huge undertaking. So they do a lot of different things. It's not just mowing, but basically, they're hired for mowing.
But if you have the right staffing, a lot of that stuff would be getting done, is that what you're saying?
Not the things like ceiling tiles and stuff like that. Really, really, what I, the, the preventive maintenance part that I need done is on the mechanical side of the house. Not so much on the interior structures and stuff like that. It's on the mechanical side, without a doubt.
Is there a chance you take those 24-hour employees to, what's the, is it 30 where they get benefits or something? Because I'm trying to do the math in my head.
I think you actually have to answer that question. I think it's 30. Maybe Jen will know. I think it's 30. Yeah. They're 24-hour people, and I think they were, they were put there just for that reason, just so they didn't have to pay them benefits. But if we're spending a lot of time training and finding, it may be costing us more than if we found some good people and kept them. I don't know how you do that, but... That would be awesome. Yeah, that would be, that would be.
I'm asking, I don't know.
Yeah. And I do have some, some numbers. Actually, I set, I set my grounds supervisor down, and we kind of went over this in the recent past. There were actually, and I'm sure Jen or Jim or somebody can probably help out with that, but there used to be a staff of, how many grounds people do you think there were at one time? Seven or eight?
At one, at one point, I think we had six.
Okay.
Six full-time.
Okay.
Folks that did everything.
Okay. See, those guys got cut, and then that's what, that's what caused the, the 24-hour thing. So, you know, it's just, it's just difficult. And, you know, especially areas like in front of the high school, they got the little, the islands out there, and at the, at the middle school, there's islands out there and stuff like that. You know, that stuff gets overlooked because there's a whole lot bigger things to do. You know, so the guys don't really think, well, that's just a little strip out there. To us, it's, it's an eyesore to us. But to them, it's like, I have this huge field to mow, you know, I don't have time for that island right now, you know? And so that's why a lot of that stuff gets overlooked, just for that reason.
And when you say shredding, you're talking about shredding documents, papers?
Documents.
And have we looked into the possibility of having one of these mobile shredding companies come and knock it out?
I think that's the way they do it here, but down in my area, is where a lot of things have been stored for years and years, those boxes. And so now, we have just gotten to the point where we're going to start shredding them, but there are 65 boxes in there that need to be removed, and then taken somewhere where the shredding is going to be. You see?
That would knock it out.
I put him on that project, when it rains and stuff like that, he's going to come in. He hasn't done it yet, but, so it's stuff like that. But they, they come inside when it's, when it's raining outside and do whatever they do.
It's like a one, I mean, it's an accumulation. It's not something that's currently.
No, no, this is an accumulation. This is the first time we've done it since I can hear.
You could knock it out one time.
Yeah. And I, I think, I don't know how often they shred every three or four, five years. Yeah, I don't know how often they do, but...
So I guess what I'm, a lot of times interested in is what do you want it, what do you want it to be? So, for instance, like you said, closing out those 400 that come on, do you need some temporary, part-time help to get you caught up? Or, like, what do you need?
No, I, I think, I mean, that's another thing that my grounds crew, that we've been discussing, if they can change filters and stuff like that on, on our rooftops and stuff like that. But that's, that's still not a PM. That's, that's not a preventive maintenance task. It's simply changing filters, you see? So those guys, I mean, they may not know how to go any grease bearings and tighten belts and stuff like that, but if I can get the filters changed, that takes a whole lot of it off of the HVAC guys, guy. So, it was, I'm just kind of chipping away at it, you know, trying to, trying to do whatever we can do to help.
I guess what got, was like the cord you're talking about. Do we just get some temps in from somewhere and just get it done?
So you're not chasing your tail?
Yeah. Let's get caught up once.
That would be, yeah, that's, that's a, yeah. Something like that would be awesome, yeah. Yeah, just to get all those cords. I think Josh's guys have done an excellent job of that. It's just, it's just, it's huge. It's not...
Yeah, yeah, it's one of those deals, it's everywhere.
Yeah.
Everywhere.
And they'll write that up over there, they'll write this one up, but they write them all up, you know? It's just, they know that we don't have the staffing to get it, but they still, repeat write-ups is what drops your grade off. So my objective, obviously, is to, is to not get repeat write-ups anymore, but it's just, you know, it's just chipping away. It's, it's just really all there is to it. But I, I guess we could bring some temporary employees in here to knock that stuff out, yeah.
I think it probably wouldn't hurt to come up with a, an ideal wish list.
With a plan.
With some estimated costs of what the employees would be that you think we should do, because prevention is always cheaper.
Yeah, absolutely.
Than us fixing stuff.
Coming from, coming from the dentist, you know better than anyone. Yeah, but I can do that. I mean, I can, I can put together a, a list of, of projects that I could have, like, but, you know, again, some of that stuff is technical, you know, so it's, it's hard. Like, covering wiring is, you know, are we going to get the professional product that we would from our own employees? You know? You know, I could give them, give them a piece of wire, I won't tell them to hide that wire, you know, but, I mean, are they going to screw the thing into wall? They're going to, you know, because a lot of times, it's just a peel and stick tape on the back of it, you know? So, it's either trust them or keep somebody with them the whole time, which is a waste of man-hours the way it is. So I'm not saying it's not possible, but there's, there's just a whole lot more variables there.
How much of that stuff is punchless stuff that didn't get completed?
Punchless.
You know what I'm saying? Like, like when your wings opened up, or you did a construction project, how much of that is stuff that they did not, no matter the vendor was, did not complete?
I can't answer that. I don't know. But there's, there's, so, I don't think Josh can answer it.
Because it seems like, it seems like there's a lot of loose ends on stuff that should have been completed by vendors.
Well, yeah, yeah. And it was, it, it's just the way the business was done at the time, you know?
Yeah.
And it may have been...
A lot of them was bad practices, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, right.
I mean, it was, hey, we need to do this, and just didn't do it right.
And I, I think a lot of it was, was maybe accepted or overlooked, now that they have the state fire marshal and the ROE teaming up on this thing. Like I said, there's more eyes are seeing more. I think that when it was just the ROE doing it, one guy, obviously, he probably didn't see as much as, as two or three sets of eyes see. So I think that probably has something to do with it as well.
So I made some notes during your presentation, so bear with me. Page three, we talked about the health, life, safety bids. I'm sorry, not bids. Inspections.
Mm-hmm.
The ROE does them.
Mm-hmm.
And who'd you say?
The architect.
The architect.
Those are 10-year eval, they're 10-year inspections. So you're required by state law to have a 10-year inspection on every building, and you're required annually to have an inspection on every building. So the architect conducts the one every 10 years, and then the ROE and the state fire marshal conduct the annual ones.
Well, memory serves, that last year, Zellers did inspections.
He did on four schools.
On four schools?
Four schools.
And if I remember right, it was five grand per school. And I've always wondered about this. Should we be bidding that out?
Well, it's, it's bidding out...
That's a shock.
It's, it's bidding out architectural services, is what it is. So, yeah, is that a possibility? Absolutely.
So Zellers doesn't automatically get to do the job in the building?
He did this time around, yeah, because that's the way it's been done in the past, I would assume. But it has to be a licensed Illinois architect in order to do, to do the, and I didn't even know that myself.
So moving forward, you'll, you'll be bidding it out?
Yeah. We're going to have, we have two more due for the 10-year, and I think it's, I can't remember. I, I think it's the high school and GES, I believe. So, but they're due every 10 years.
All right. Moving over to snow removal, you said some of our equipment isn't made for it. I thought Mendenhall did our snow removal.
I'm talking about just around the immediate school. Mendenhall does the parking lots. The, the schools are done by the, by the custodians.
You're talking about sidewalks?
I'm talking about sidewalk stairs, stuff like that.
Do you know what you need there?
I, not exactly. For the most part, we're pretty much covered, but like one school, for example, Chatham Elementary, they're the one that has the two-wheel gator, two-wheel drive gator, and, you know, I mean, he can, he does okay with it if he gets two or three inches of snow, but if it's any more than that, he's hand shoveling.
Okay.
And I, you know, some people have, and I don't know what Deb's got, but some people have Arctic Cats and, and stuff like that. What do you have, Deb?
You have Arctic Cat and a snow blower, and then shovels.
Yeah. And everybody has a snow blower, but that's not enough to get, I mean, all a snow blower is going to do is just cut a path, you know? The Arctic Cat is what they use to get the wider sidewalks.
Is it a time problem? You can't get the equipment moved over to the other place soon enough?
No, it's, it's there. We leave it there in the winter time.
No, but I'm saying, I'm saying for the one that you're deficient, when you got the gator that only has two-wheel drive, is it a situation where you can move that Arctic Cat and do that, or is it a time issue?
It would be a time issue, right. Because these custodians come in in the morning time and have to have the schools cleaned by, you know, by the beginning of school.
They get those bus sidewalks.
Yeah.
When the buses, before the buses start arriving, so they get there even before they're supposed to start working.
So that's a piece of equipment you might want to put in your budget?
Yeah.
Have you done that? You should do that. Because, I, I mean, like, whatever, but it's, shoveling by hand is really time consuming.
It is. It's very time consuming.
And it's dangerous.
And, you know, nobody's ever brought it up over the years because it was never, I mean, it's an issue, but it was, you know, something that was being managed, you know, something being handled, you know? But it's not right for, you know, somebody to have to be on a two-wheel, you know, golf cart, basically.
Deb having an Arctic Cat and somebody else having it.
Yeah, exactly.
But you can only use those when there's a certain level of snow, too. A snow blower doesn't work with an inch, so then you're shoveling.
Right, exactly. Then you're shoveling.
Then you've got to put down salt, too.
Yeah. And I mean, they, our custodians do an awesome job cleaning sidewalks. They really, really do. It was just, we just need to make it easier in some schools. And then Chatham Elementary is, he needs help, right now. And what I did last year, because he, he was down a man last year, so we supplemented with, with the grounds guys. And so the first thing they did in the morning time, we got a snow, they came here and did this building first, and then they went straight over to Chatham Elementary and helped Randy over there. It wasn't perfect, but, but we, we managed to get it done.
So bear with me.
Sure.
I come from corporate where we got to submit our...
I can see, I got your tie on.
Well, but I'm used to submitting and then getting denied, but it's on the docket. So I guess that's what I'm trying to relay, is if you present to us what you want it to look like, we may deny it this year, but, because everybody wants something.
Sure.
So...
As soon as I can define exactly what I want, because there's so many moving parts here, as soon as I can define exactly what I want, I will definitely let you know.
Okay. Absolutely. So like on page six, is this what you want it to look like would be another example? And you don't have to answer right now.
No, it's not what I want.
Okay.
I want more black on there than I want reds. That's what I want.
Okay. So can you, are you working on bringing it?
Yes, okay. That's, that's the part where I brought my, my grounds supervisor in, and we're going to talk about the full-time employees that he had in the past. So, yeah.
And are the, are the PMs that you're closing unfinished causing damage?
Yes.
Like, is that something we need to move on quickly?
No.
How do we do it?
Well, it's, yeah, to say, if the PMs aren't being done, if you don't change your oil in your car, is it going to cause damage?
Eventually.
It is. Okay. Same with mechanical systems. It's exactly the same thing.
So we want to get right before the engine locks up?
Ideally.
So you have a triage system, right?
Right now, yeah, through our work order system, yeah. And right now, it's, it's basically, we're, we're not in horrible shape. I mean, I'm not here to tell you that we're in horrible shape. We're in pretty decent shape, but if we don't do something to start maintaining the equipment better, we are not going to be in good shape for long. You know, it's just, we're just chugging along, and basically, it's, it's, you know, it's basically just repairing emergencies. Now, if it breaks, you know, rather than, if a PM changing the filters and the belts and stuff like that would have prevented this belt from breaking, or the bearing from going out, or whatever the case is, we just saved ourselves a service call. We just saved ourselves one emergency service call. So, you know, maintenance is, it's, it's, it's just key. It really, really is.
When you expect to have something like that in your...
Sure. I, I don't, I can't give you a date exactly, because I don't know. I started putting the spreadsheet together, and it's, it's difficult because for me to, I mean, I know what I'm saying, but for me to tell you guys what I'm saying, let you guys understand, and I'm not taking any...
That's the worst part.
It's difficult. It's, it's difficult to translate. It really is. So, I'm trying to put the spreadsheet together to where all of us can understand it. I can explain, and everybody will understand it. You know, rather than, rather than being confused about it, I mean, I'd rather just be crystal clear so everybody understands what's going on. So that's the difficult part of it.
You could run your draft through the facilities and ground committee, you know?
I'll, I will definitely do that.
I mean, you know, that's...
We'll definitely do that.
We've done that in finance committee for certain...
And we do. I mean, there's not much happens in buildings and grounds that those gentlemen don't have.
Yeah, right, so...
We haven't had a meeting in about a month, a couple of months, but we've got one coming up, so. As a matter of fact, I plan on talking about all that.
And if you want to give us a really rough one?
Yeah.
We can go over it for several months if you want.
And that's kind of the way I was planning on doing it, just bringing it up to you gentlemen, and, and kind of letting you know what my ideas are, and then we can just elaborate from there, you know? And Dr. Wood needs to know about it, obviously, as well as everybody else, doesn't he?
The last question I, hopefully, the last question I had was the, the roofing consultant. Would that be independent of a vendor, or do we then partner?
It won't be a vendor. It's not a vendor. It would be somebody that is, you know, what, what I don't want to do here is make it somebody that, that has a company that does roofing. You know, I, I want it to be a company that, that knows about roofing, but doesn't necessarily, like Trimco, for example, okay? Trimco's a roofing company, and we used them in St. Louis. They were our consultant. But when they, when they bid out a job, they bid out a job with general specifications. There was nothing in there that said it was a Trimco product or anything like that. It's general specifications. But they helped us write those specifications. So, it just, anybody can bid it, as long as they're paying, paying prevailing wage, anybody can bid that work, and that's where we need to be.
You need a subject matter expert that can help you come up with those specs.
Correct. And, and the language, I mean, I don't know, you know, I don't know how much insulation, R13 insulation goes underneath roof. I don't know that, but they do, you know?
Well, the concern due to our past here is why I'm asking the question, is we, you learn things, but even having the vendors help write the specs, they're dialing it in to the people they want to get it.
You're right, that's a possibility. That's, and it's hard to find people that are, that are neutral. It's very difficult to find, especially if we don't want to pay them. You know what I'm saying? If we're just going to use them. So, it's, it's difficult. It's, it's not an easy task.
Well, it's...
But I don't know enough about roofing to say, yeah, we need to go, you know, replace this roofing, without using an architect. Now, if we go out and use an architect, my problems are solved. But I'm trying to save the district money by not using an architect in, in the plans and specifications part of it.
Well, and, I mean, I think if you felt comfortable, I mean, personally, for me, if I, if you needed an independent opinion which costs money, I'd say, that's fine, because we know the definition of the specs is completely separate from the vendors who are going to bid. That's my personal opinion, and...
You know, and we may want to go out and just, just advertise and, and advertise for a, a roofing consultant, you know, a, a neutral roofing consultant, you know, which we can do.
Would they be architects or engineers, Mike?
Well, in some cases, neither. I mean, some, some cases, they're just roofing professionals, you know, that, that aren't, aren't architects or engineers. And then, if that's the case, then you can go, which you'll see in my next presentation, sorry about that, guys, but you'll see in my next presentation, in that case, you go out, design, build, and we manage it here, and you don't pay architects and engineers. Yet they need those, they hire them themselves.
Yeah. I do have one question, though. You made reference to the fact that you had to buy a new vehicle for...
Not new, not new. We had to buy a replacement vehicle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, did that come through Jim Lovelace's transportation report?
Can't be my budget.
And how much did you spend?
$3,500.
Did we see that?
We kept under the $5,000.
It's his budget?
That's his budget.
Do you have, do you have access to state surplus?
I looked at that, and, yes, I do. And I looked at that, and there wasn't a vehicle in state surplus under 10 grand.
In fact, they didn't bring a vehicle to transportation.
We did.
What, what were you looking for?
We evaluated it as well.
For a truck?
Signed off on it. It was...
It's a van. It's a full-size service van. We bought it off of an electrical contractor It's a van. It's a full-size service van. We bought it off of an electrical contractor out in Waverly. Uh, thirty-five hundred dollars. The thing's in really, really good shape. We had Jim's guys look at it before we ever bought it. We took it for a day and, and drove it and had Jim's guys look at it and they blessed it and, uh, we proceeded with the purchase. I mean, Charlotte knew about it and, you know, and all that stuff. I, it was under five thousand dollars. That's why I asked, you know, obviously I was talking to Charlotte and Dr. Wood. Any other questions? Presentation number two. Sorry, guys. This was a short sweep, I promise. So this is a three-year construction, construction plan for, uh, facilities, grounds against the same mission statement. The projects that I have scheduled for this year are you guys, these are, um, real recognizable to you guys. Uh, chiller replacement, uh, and the HVAC upgrade at CES, those have already had board approval to go out to bid. Um, chiller replacement is on, is on, out being, uh, publicized right now and, uh, 100 and 200 wings will be out hopefully by the end of the week, if not early next week. Um, the parking lot at GMS and the science wing roof at GMS, these are, uh, the parking lot was the project that was supposed to go health, life, safety. When I first got here, uh, there's not enough money in health, life, safety to do it, but that project needs to be done. If anybody's ever driven through the middle school parking lot and the bus lanes over there, you'll, you would totally agree with me. That place is horrible. Um, so we're going to take it out of construction funds. Um, and then the, the science wing roof, another roofing consulting issue. Um, that roof needs to be replaced. I think it's got what Dev 50 leaks in it probably.
I replaced 34 tile two weeks ago.
It's crazy how bad your place leaks. It's just insane. So that's all going to come out of construction bond as for this year. The following year, 18, 19. These are projects that, that are on the books that, that need to be done. Funding is yet to be determined, but their total there is one point, was that 1.26? Uh, so that's 18, 19 projects and that includes, um, there's a, another project, a parking lot project for GIS over there too. It's not, GIS isn't as bad as GMS, but it's, it's in, it's in pretty decent, pretty bad shape actually. Next slide. So 2019, 2020 projects, um, modifications to some outdoor air dampers over at the high school. You know, we just need to keep in mind that that system over there is, is coming up on 18 years old. Those dampers are 18 years old. So what happens is they, you know, the air handlers kick on and they start, they move those dampers. Now we're sucking in outside air. They should be closed. We're sucking in outside air. So tonight we're sucking in 40 degree outside air, which is not bad right now, but when it gets to be 10 degrees outside, now we have to heat that air back up to, to satisfy the building or air conditioning time. 90, 95 degree air we're sucking in through those bad dampers. Now we're trying to cool it back down to, to control the space temperature and it's just very, very difficult to do. Um, you know, it's 18, 19 years old. They're wore out just like a lot of the other systems is. And then the other thing I want to do over there at the high school is refinish, refinish that gym floor. Next slide. So this is just a slide to show where the lion's share of the money is being spent, which is 17, 18. Next slide. This is where I wanted to explain the, um, when we did the, the project over at, uh, Chatham Elementary School, we did, this is the method we use. Design, bid, build, traditional build, design, bid, build. And what that is, is, uh, you have an architect basically going and designing the system and, and, through Kim's help, we put a plan together is what we wanted. Um, they went over and they designed the system. They helped us bid, bid the project out. Uh, they put the advertisements out and all that stuff. They had the bid openings, the pre-bid meetings and all that stuff. And I was involved in all of it, but, um, basically what that means is that further down through that project, and it happened a couple of times over there. This bottom right here where, say the drawings may have shown a certain, a certain outlet should be there or something like that. And the contractor says, no, that kind of outlet doesn't work. Well, now that we're pointing fingers at each other, you know, who's going to pay for it? And I'm like, well, I'm not paying for it. That's for sure. But you get a lot of finger pointing going back and forth and that happened two or three times over there. Um, which is the other, the other delivery method is called design build. And what that means, like, like the mechanical projects, chiller project, for example, we put that out to mechanical contractors. And if they need an architect or an engineer, and most, most big guys have their own engineers, but if they need an architect to determine whether the roof will hold rooftop units or whatever the case is, they hire their own architect. And we just have to manage this one person, which is the design build contractor. And then there is no finger pointing. If there's a problem, those guys have to fix that problem inside. Not, and I don't have to deal with it, you see? So basically the beauty of this whole thing is that there's one person, there's one person that I call, there's one person responsible for warranty, problems, whatever the case is. They all have to deal with one guy.
But do they bid different? Or do you still have specs when they bid?
There, there's a, there's a scope of work out there, exactly what, what we want done. Yeah. But you have to kind of leave it open. And the way we did this one, say the chiller at the high school, for example, um, we know that there are certain things that you have to have, but we opened it up because over there right now, there's carrier chillers over there. That's the branding. So we opened it up to say you can bid carrier, train, McQuay. I can remember the last one. Whatever the last one was. There are four brands. Um, you can bid in any of those four brands. You know, their, their objective is to get the low bid, the most responsive bid is their objective. So they're going to go out there and beat those vendors up to try to get the best price for their equipment that they can get. All four of those pieces of equipment will meet our needs. But it's, that's why I put it out there, give them four or five different choices and then let them do the work.
Do we get a better price or is there a price we pay for having one person to talk to?
Well, no, no, we don't pay an extra price for that. We bid it out. We bid it out to five or six different contractors who would, any of those five or six contractors would be the design build contractor.
But we would, we would come in about the same place in terms of total cost of the project?
Well, last year when we bid it out, um, the low was like six, I think it was 670 and the next guy was eight twenty, eight thirty.
I'm just talking a total, between the two different ways of doing it.
Oh yeah. Well, definitely. Design bill is definitely cheaper because you're not paying an architect.
So you get, you get a one-point contact and it's cheaper.
That's it. It's definitely cheaper without a doubt. Yep. Next slide.
Questions?
So like in a project like that where you're allowing them to design basically what the product is that they're getting or putting in for us, right? Is the, do, is there any potential there for us saying, we need the high school cooled. They tell us this will cool it and it comes up short and we're stuck?
That's where we come in with good documentation. Uh, when we put that RFP out, we put it out, what I did, I, I showed them the existing system that we have and the existing system is 900 ton carrier chiller system with, and when the, this amount of pumps and all that stuff. So I showed them the exact system that we have right now and it's up to them to bid to that. Now, some of my specs said, um, to meet or exceed the existing design criteria. And also we, um, put in there, most mechanical systems are designed for 95 degree outside air. So what it says is when it's 95 degrees outside, I should be able to cool this building effectively at 95 degrees. Should be able to. I make it 100 degrees because now guaranteed, because we do get 100 degree days. And if it's a 100 degree day and it's only designed to 95, it's not going to cool it. It's just not. It will cool it. It just works really, really hard to do it. And then if you have leaky dampers and stuff like that, you'll never get it done. So that's why I have them design it to 100 degrees. So we do have certain, I'd, I'd like for y'all to go on the website and look at it. You'll see there are design criteria that are, that's on that RFP.
Because theoretically 18 years later, the technology's better. They should be able to do more with less.
That's true. Absolutely.
We also, we also should be over manned there because my recollection is that was supposed to cool even the addition. But when we put the addition on, we had a geothermal. So we should be way over actually.
We're not.
In theory.
We're not.
No?
We're not. No.
So what are the calculations?
We take on a hot day and then now when they design mechanical systems, so there's 900 tons of cooling over there. That building at any, like on a 90 degree day, 95 degree day, we run about 600 tons of cooling. We have like two compressors out over, three compressors out over there where we can't run 900 tons. But we run about 700 tons of cooling over there and it struggles. It really struggles. So when they design those systems, they design them with a certain percentage of redundancy in them as well. In case you lose a bank or whatever the case is, you still have backup cooling for that. Same with heating. There's eight boilers in that school over there. We'll never use eight boilers at one time in that school. It's there for redundancy, which is what you want to do no matter what happens. You always want redundancy. Otherwise, you know, if you have in your house, if your furnace goes out in your house, you had to lose all your cooling. If the furnace, the boiler goes out over there, we don't, we don't lose our healing, our heating. We still have stages we can use.
So I'm of the understanding that we have about four million left of construction bonds and you've got 3.9. So basically we've got money to do the, the next page with the 1.260, your funding source is to be determined.
Correct.
That gets on page three. What, what are you thinking there? How are we gonna?
I think we need to have some discussions and find out how we are going to fund those projects. I don't, I don't have an answer for that. Um, I'm not privy to all of the funding avenues that we may have. I, I'm not privy to all that stuff. So I don't know. But, um, I put that in there because so everybody understands that we still have needs. We still have a certain amount of needs in the district. And even when we complete all that stuff on all three of those lists, we're still going to have need.
I guess that's my overriding concern is the first rule of finance is get three months of, like in your home, three months of cushion before you call me to invest more. So what's our cushion? And it looks like we not only don't have a cushion, we're underwater. So you made the comment on the, where was it? On one of those projects that it's a horrible situation or something. I think it was GMS parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
So horrible is probably dependent on which one of us, you know, everybody has an opinion. It depends where you come from. That parking lot's like brand new in some towns.
You're right.
So what, do we stop the bidding? Do we like stop and come up with a plan on what has to be done? And I'm just asking.
Those projects, in my opinion, are things that have to be done.
So this page, if we don't do them, page three.
You're going to pay later. You know, really it's, it's, if you, if you don't do them in those timeframes, it's, it's just going to cost you more money down the road.
Way I look at it too, you know, Mike and I have discussed this, you know, the money that's, that's available is going to be put towards projects that are a greatest priority. That being next year and the year after. On these, I think it's more of a, yes, we need to do these things and here's the anticipated cost. It's going to, we're going to have to incur if we do that. Not to say that it perhaps won't be a 19, 20 project or a 20, 21 project. I mean, the chillers and the air conditioner are a prime example of something that I think that, you know, you could have done perhaps two or three years earlier, maybe four years earlier, but we didn't because quite frankly, the funds weren't there. And we were able to maintain them to the point at which we were able to secure the funds to then replace them. So when I look at the 18, 19 or anything past that, that's why I'm not a big five, 10 year, I think those are wish lists, wish lists. But I do believe that two, three years, you know, I mean, some of these things we might be able to get out two, three years, two or three more years.
Correct.
Doesn't mean that they're not important things.
Right.
Quite frankly, you could have something come up this next year that can supersede everything else on this list.
Very, very true. That's what I was going to say.
And all of a sudden, we're not going to do things that we needed to get done next year.
Very true. That's exactly what I was getting ready to say. You just never know. I mean, it, it could be, anything could happen between now and, and 2020. You just don't know, you know? But these are just a best anticipation of what needs to be done. That's really all it is. It's not set in stone that these things need to be done like right away, but they're going, they're going to need to be done.
Where will we, like, we know that we're maxed out on debt.
Mm-hmm.
So where will we get the 1.2? Like, it looks to me like until 2028, we can't do these.
Well, I'd like to interject that the board made a conscientious decision not to sell the remaining, um, the remaining amount of bonds that were available, but we voted not to sell it. We have to take responsibility for the fact that, okay, we recognize, um, that we have put many administrators in a, a not very ideal situation. So I, I think what we have to do is figure out, um, I mean, I think it's a fair statement, Mike, that you say, I don't know how we're going to fund it because in the back of your head, and if, if we traded places, I'd say the same thing in the back of my head. Well, you chose not to issue the last little block of bonds, bonds. So, you know, we have to figure this out together. But I, I do see from Charlotte's, um, treasures report that there's like about $835,000 in health, life, safety monies. And you can use health, life, safety monies for your parking lot.
You can.
Yes.
I know you can. I know you can. I know you can. But that Friday's 1.2 million dollars.
Well, you can split it. Use some money, use 500,000 from health, life, safety. I mean, um, I think it's, you know, I, I personally think that instead of just saying, how are you going to fund it, Mike? We all have to say, okay, let's talk to Charlotte. Help us out, Charlotte. What do you think? You know, um?
And I, and I think to your point, Susan, I think, you know, not only are we looking to prioritize, but you know, the parking lot, for example, there's the parking lot. There's the driveway. I mean, there are sections that can be done, you know, maximizing those dollars that we have available.
Right.
If the money's not there, you can't do something. So I think to the same degree, I think over the past couple of years, we've, we've really had some recovery and addressed many of our financial situations. I think that we're going to have to continue to be creative and look at ways that we can fund this. I mean, quite frankly, there may be grant sources. I mean, one of the best things that's happened has been the fact that we've passed a budget. And so once we have a little bit better understanding of those revenue streams that come in, will give us, I believe, a better opportunity to then sit down and, and strategize. Probably look at, again, like I said, next year, although this list shows three years out, that priority, the priority that we have next year might not even be on this list.
That's correct. That's, that's very true.
The only other thing, um, I, you know, just like what Doug was saying, you know, taking the middle school parking lot and doing the bus lanes. I mean, the bus lanes are key. You've got to keep the bus lanes in good shape and, I mean, there might be a way to parcel some of this out, but, you know, I know it's going to kill Charlotte. She's, you know, probably taking great pride in the fact that the health, life, safety balance is at 835,000. But on the other hand, um, you know, the reality of it is to issue bonds in the past, the operation and maintenance budget, I mean, really good fiscal appropriation by fund didn't occur. So we're still trying to make up for that. And the other thing is, I guess one of the questions I have is looking at the September 2017 treasures report. Um, the basically, you know, construction bond money is 3.925. Um, that's what's left. Do you think it's prudent to leave some unspent money in this account just in case there's some huge disaster? I, it's just.
Well, if there's.
I'm just asking, you know, okay, so technically if it all came in at 3.9, um, you still have about, well, I don't know how, how much is outstanding for Chatham Elementary, but let's just say, you know, you have 25,000 left.
Twenty-seven. It's about 27,000 left at Chatham.
So would that be, uh, do you feel comfortable? Should, should we leave a little bit?
I was under the impression we couldn't do that because you couldn't, you can only hold those bond dollars for a certain amount of time. That, that was just my understanding.
Yeah, yeah. That is true. Yeah, that is true. But believe me, I mean, it's between now and, I mean, I would basically say, do you want to hold out like 50,000? It's going to get spent in the timeline that's required.
I think one of the things that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, one of the things that we talked about, because as we talked about estimated costs, we always anticipate high.
Okay, so.
Exactly. Those aren't, those aren't solid numbers by any stretch of the imagination.
No. And so I think, you know, when you go into them, I always think, I mean, any prudent fiscal management would say you come in higher than you anticipate. For just that very reason. I, I wouldn't expect that we would hit the max cost on any of these things.
Correct.
So here, so go with me then, because once this is spent, well, you guys approved it is, is the pushback I'm going to get. Well, so I'm stopping you right now. Are we sure we want to bid every one of these and then be out of money when one of these breaks? Or should we stop and, I don't know, if you're saying we need to do the bus lane and leave the rest for a few years? I don't know, but it's better to talk about it now than after we bid it.
Yeah.
Am I wrong?
No, you're right. You're right. I, I think, my personal opinion is those four projects on that 2017, 18 project or schedule need to be done. That's all there is to it. They, they need to be done. I mean, we can't, we can't go another year at the roof, the roof of the middle school. There's no way. I mean, it's, there's no way. I mean, it's, that roof is shot. I mean, it is. It's, it's shot. And, and the parking lot, you know, the thing about the parking lot is, and this is before my time, but it appears if you look at that, didn't the buses come up through the front at one time, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. So you can tell if you walk in, if you go, the buses come up the side of the building now. So they wore out the front of the building, right? So now they're on the side of the building and they're using the parking lot, going through the big parking lot to get up to the side of the building.
They're every morning. Yeah.
Yeah. So you understand what I'm saying, right? So they wore out the whole thing out. So.
That's not the reason we moved.
But so just.
We've had staff members fall because of the potholes.
Yeah.
The piece right in front of the school, I, I remember that and going, yeah, that's pretty bad.
Yeah.
I don't know about the rest. I haven't looked, I guess.
Look at the side. If, if you get over that way, look at the side. And that's where the buses go now and it's, it's, it's beat down. But the parking lot's just as bad because the buses have to go through the parking lot to make that big turn to head back out of the, you know.
And I guess I don't, I don't necessarily want to solve this tonight. And I guess, I don't, I don't necessarily want to solve this tonight. I'm not trying to delay it. I just, I think it behooves us to make darn sure. Because if we do this page, we're done.
We are. We are. So. But at the same time, like Doug said, I, I hope that I got real, real aggressive on my estimates is what I hope.
You typically do.
Yes, I do. Because, because I don't want it to be a surprise to anybody that, okay, this job, I, I estimated it as a million dollars and come back a million three. That makes me look bad, first of all, and then it just kind of puts the whole budget thing into, into a whirlwind. So what my hope is, is that we, we come back at the end of this thing and we have, and there are little projects out there like the, uh, the dampers and, and there's some $5,000 projects. So say we have $50,000 left at the end of the day. So we do those other projects before they're actually scheduled to be done, but it's still coming out of construction line. I mean, the little $5,000 projects could be done next year too. It's just I prioritized them in my mind the way I thought they should be done. You see, but if they're little, or, you know, a small project, we still have the money for, why wouldn't we go ahead and do it regardless of what year it's actually scheduled? This is just, this is just a very, very loose tentative plan is all it is. There's nothing written in stone in any of this. I mean, how, how could it be? You know, it's, you just don't know, you know? Any other questions?
That's it? Shut up, Mike. An hour later.
Mike, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
We, we know buildings are expensive. You can't put one up without there being ongoing and there, it's continuous.
It is.
And then there's major stuff that happens.
Yeah, especially with school. I mean, the size of the building is.
We appreciate the plan. We appreciate the priorities. We appreciate the list of stuff that you see coming. Um, I wish there was some way we could anticipate what's not coming and then see that too, but it's, it doesn't happen. Keep us posted and, and we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
This is information only. Um, moving on, 4-4, anybody got anything they want to address the school board on, on an agenda item? This is your opportunity to speak up, ask, stand at the podium, get five minutes to talk. Anything on the agenda? No? All right, moving on then, consent agenda items, 5-1 to 5-7. Anybody wish to pull any of them? If not, I need a motion to approve them as presented. Thank you, Brandon. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Greg, thank you. Jen, please.
Brewer.
Yes.
Duberag.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yuravich.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes. Uh, moving on, personnel consent items, 6-1 to 6-11. Anybody wish to pull any of them? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve 6-1 to 6-11 as presented. Thank you, Brandon. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Susan, thank you. Jen, please.
Brewer.
Yes.
Duberag.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yuravich.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes. Uh, moving on, new business. We have first reading from press for July of 2017. There's a number of policies here. Information only, first reading.
And are the, the ones from last month that were athletic, are in here again? Is it still, so we're not, it's still first reading?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, communications, 8-1, future board meeting dates, November 6th, there's the SIP curriculum report. Looking forward to it, anticipating some good stuff there. Triple I conference, November 17th through the 19th. I can't believe that's here already. Uh, November 28th is our regular board meeting. November 18th is a regular board meeting.
Do somebody December.
Thanks, guys. Glad you're paying attention.
He was testing.
Yep. Any other dates? Are we going to have a construction committee meeting, first part of November?
It's going to be here though.
Okay.
I'll send down the, the agenda tomorrow.
All right, 8-2, anybody got anything they want to address the school board on, on any item?
I, I have a couple. Um, I, I have a couple points that I'd like to address.
Okay.
Uh, okay, um, Becky made reference to the fact that you went to the large unit district association up in Chicago, um, and that you were a speaker. What did you speak about?
I did. I was fortunate to, you know, one of the things that I led was a roundtable discussion with superintendents and some of the issues with larger districts as it relates. Number one, uh, with diverse population growth within communities, um, sharing some of my personal background and experience, and that's what they were most interested in, and talking about districts such as ours that are evolving, uh, and, and looking at some of the socioeconomic issues. We also talked about trauma. Uh, trauma was a big issue that a lot of schools are having to deal with right now, and how are they weaving this into the curriculum, into their schools and their instructional plans and, um.
What do you mean by trauma?
Well, trauma, well, when you, when I say trauma to you, what do you think of?
I see you.
You see me? When you say.
No.
That is harsh.
No, no. I said. I said you. I was the he, you said.
Okay. When I see trauma, I see you.
Oh.
Wow, that hurt. I'm sorry. It got me.
Oh, yeah. No, no.
Wow, that's going to be a long year. No, no, trauma, trauma is having to do. Sorry about that. For the most part, uh, trauma has seen as, you know, big ticket items, particularly as it relates to injury and things like that. But what we're seeing in schools now more so, um, are trauma within populations of students. And that could be, uh, the family life, some of their experiences, um, that they're bringing into the school. Uh, it could be having to make sure that we're dealing more so with the social, emotional aspect of it, making sure that we secure that. Because quite frankly, a lot of the social, emotional trauma issues that students are dealing with, uh, have a huge impact on their academic performance and overall results. And so, the more that we could attend to those things and particularly identify them in the classroom, uh, the better experience it's going to be, not only for the students, but it's really getting to know and understand your families and students. And so we had a great deal of discussion about that. It was nice because there were other administrators in the building that also were able to bring in and weave in some of their experience, particularly from high incidence, high trauma environments. And so, uh, that was a very good discussion. Another avenue that we talked about was school finance. And, um, there was an interest in some of the steps that we've taken as a school district to, um, achieve some of the things that we have in regards to fiscal responsibility. Um, and matter of fact, Luda had asked me to speak a little bit more on that and some of the practices, uh, management-wise, uh, that we had done, and not only from an administrative perspective, but because I explained to them, it wasn't just about, uh, what we do as a board, what I do as a superintendent, but what we do in our buildings from an administrative perspective, from our directors, and more importantly, from our teachers, uh, and our support staff, and what they're doing and contributing to making sure that we can address some of the financial issues that we did. Uh, they thought it was quite impressive. Uh, we talked about things such as audit findings and, and how we, you know, had, we were at 10 and how we have zero, and just some of the steps that we took and some of the things we're doing. And I just expressed how it was a collaborative effort and it really takes everybody, it just can't be someone, you know, pointing and saying, get things done. So those were the three primary areas that we discussed and that I led the discussion during that time, so.
So that was like an hour workshop or two hours?
Took an hour. It was, it was an hour. It was an hour's worth of Luda time.
Okay.
Um, and I will share with you, one of the things I think we're going to do, I think, um, on November 6th, you're going to see unveiled, um, our instructional leadership team and the plans that we have in our buildings and as a district. Uh, one of the things I'm most excited about was not just the end product. Um, you know, Jen did a, did a fantastic job in helping lead all of our leaders. There were teachers that were involved, there were instructional cuts that were involved. But I really think the template beyond the actual product itself that we worked on, um, it was the process that it took to get there. That alongside with, um, uh, the, the district instructional plan and our strategic plan and the way that it's going to connect and, and the way it should be. A lot of these documents are created and put on shelves. These are going to be living, breathing documents. And so we're going to have our strategic plan, we're going to have our school and our district plans, and they're going to intertwine. And I'm going to talk, and I've brought this up in our last meeting, that I see us, I'd like to present this at a triple I conference, I think, as the great exposure for our district, uh, for our schools, because there are so many people that are doing great work out there. And more so about the process and not the product. I often think there are products that are developed, uh, some are good, some are not, but I think that when we have a good product such as this, the process to get there is what the important part was. So, um, I've already been in, in talks with them about us bringing a team and actually presenting, uh, from an instructional leadership aspect, which that would involve teachers, administrators as well. So I think we're doing a lot of good things and I think that we need to make sure that we're out there and sharing that with people. We have great people in this district and they're doing great things. And I think that we need to go beyond some of the isolated work that we do and get out there and let people know we're doing, because we really have staff that are doing a tremendous job.
Okay, so I, I will take responsibility, um, to say to my peers that we as a board have not yet finished up our value statement. In fact, we haven't even started it. So that's an outstanding, um, thing that we need to do as a board and I don't, I don't know how you, I mean, I'm happy to jumpstart it in any way, but we need to do this as part of the strategic planning process. And, um, I guess, I, you're still working, I mean, really so far, we're waiting for the indicators from your staff.
Correct.
We're, we need to do the value statement, um, for us. So does anybody have any inclination? Do you want me to give it a go or you guys want to set up? Like, Dwayne, we've got to do this value statement. We have to do it. We're, we have to do it because we need to complete this in its entirety, first time through.
Yeah, I understand. I just knew we just did the mission and vision and I thought we were done, but we're not.
I know.
Do we have a mission statement?
Yes.
Were you approved?
It's not approved yet.
No.
All I want to do is, we're going to get through our curriculum piece, because I want to get that out there to see if there's anything back or anything we need to tweak with our, um, strategic plan and then we will present that.
What are you requesting, like a board special?
Well, you know, no, no. I mean, I think, let's not set up a meeting for this. Let's just see if we can get something, you know, that I think, let's just see if we can get a draft going. I don't, I don't want to have another meeting on a value statement. I'm happy to try my hand at it.
It's got to be all us.
I know. No, no. I mean, I'm happy to put together a draft.
Bill's got a good point. Let's let Bill speak.
You've already given this some thought, so I would be of the mind saying, let's go.
Well, all we say, I'm happy to put together a draft. And then, yes, it will take, um, some rewrites, and if you complain excessively, the rewrites then go to that person that complains excessively.
Could you define excessively?
What's the value statement that is currently?
We don't have one. We've never had.
We've never gotten this far.
We have values and beliefs on our website.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we do.
What is our value statement?
We still have values and beliefs that are on our district website and are actually on our template.
Okay, well, is, are those, that's left over from?
That's from the last strategic plan.
Which is a few years old.
It is, but you can't say we've never had.
So, okay. Uh, well, I guess.
And I referenced some.
2000.
I referenced some quite a bit.
Oh, okay.
And are they, are they needing something? Are they lacking or are they?
I think they could be enhanced.
They could be enhanced. That's a good term.
Okay, well, great. Maybe you could, maybe we could put some hits together.
I'm not volunteering.
No, I, I'll do.
I think Susan's.
Look, I'll do the work. I just need to, you know.
Google Doc, you got it, Sharon.
Gold, yes, Sharon, we'll give some feedback.
Yeah, and then if you complain too much, I'm going to back out. It will be good.
It will be.
So, um, okay, values and beliefs, I'll do that.
All right.
And then, um, when is Randy going, I know that he's gone, but is Randy going to give an update on his security and safety report next month?
He can do that. You did have some questions.
Yeah, right.
So, he's not here and I'll talk to him.
So if he could do that in November or December?
Maybe December, I'll see.
Yeah, that's good. Because, um, there are things that were mentioned in this previous report that looked like it had required some future actions.
Okay.
Steve, I have one more.
What?
We were supposed to do a superintendent mid-year review and we're, so I was thinking the other day, last year's got moved back to March, it was supposed to be done in January. Do we just move it back to January and do it in January?
Yes.
Okay. I'm asking, I mean.
Yeah, I think.
It just seems reasonable. We're already past our.
Yeah.
It'd be a 10-month review then is what it would be, I guess. But we need to get it on the calendar so we don't get back to March. How's that?
Yeah.
And then schedule it every six months so that we don't miss again, I guess was my overriding point.
So could we look for a date in January? I mean, it's not too soon to look at your calendar, our calendars and things. So, um, the meetings are going back to Monday beginning January 1st, correct?
Correct.